This conference will now be recorded.
So it's coming in right now?
Yeah.
Here comes the faxing, great.
I'd like to call the planning board meeting, regular meeting for January 21st, 2025. And we have, we have two new members. I'd like to have, would you like to say something and introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Meredith Kate Petrelli, and I'm excited to be a part of the planning board and appreciate the opportunity from you guys to be a part.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Dinmead, and I'm going to echo exactly what MK said. I'm just excited to give my best to the town and to everybody here. So thank you.
Okay. And may I ask that, a little bit of background that each of you can help us out on the planning board here that you think you can help with?
Absolutely. So I'm owner and operator of Banks Builders. We're a construction company based out of here in Cape Codarette. We've lived in Cape Codarette, my husband and I, and our two boys now for 10 years, and are really excited to be a part of this board and not only just for my family, but for the community and the growth that it's making in the past few years.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Cape Codarette for 18 years now. I own and operated a small business in the area. And I'm just excited for, to see the opportunities that I can assist with. I'm going to be raising my little girl here. She's seven right now, so a lot of growing to do, and I want to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you very much. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September 17th. I hope everybody's had the opportunity to look at them. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the town meeting board.
I had one typo.
Oh, you did?
On the last paragraph.
Oh goodness.
Last paragraph, ladies included such uses as small cemeteries. Just the addition of as.
As cemeteries, libraries.
As. Such as small cemeteries.
Such as. Okay.
That was the only typo I found. But I do do my homework.
I didn't catch that. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second?
Jeremy seconded.
Oh, you was firsted.
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
No. Oh. But I'm welcome to make the first motion.
Yeah, you were asking for a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, pardon. Well, I'll move the minutes to be accepted with one minor correction.
Yes.
And Jeremy seconded?
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There's, it's, we have an area for public comments. There's no one in attendance. Frank, is there any way that anyone can do it through the system, watching it for public comments?
So technically, technically, yes, the technology would allow for that. We don't typically allow that. It just becomes, it becomes more difficult to manage that way. But if you all wanted to, I'm sure we could make that happen. It just gets a little more complicated, so.
Might speak of it in the future. The fourth item is the ordinance amend to the uniform development. In section four, request a zoning permit application for lot clearing and other zoning permits requirements. Do we have any questions on it?
I had a question about the no cost permit. So any zoning permit applied for to clear a lot will be at no cost?
The way that the ordinance language is written now, that's correct. That's certainly something that the planning board could discuss. The three members who are continuing to serve will recall the previous discussion that the planning board had about lot clearing for the two new members. This is an item that the Board of Commissioners specifically asked us to bring back to the planning board. So the language that you see in the draft amendment in your packet is pretty much identical to what you all talked about the last time. And if you recall, the planning board had, I think, a healthy discussion about whether or not we should require a zoning permit when someone clears a lot, or whether or not we should essentially take care of that when the new home is proposed, which is most of the time what happens anyway. But as part of that discussion, one of the compromise ideas was to require the zoning permit for lot clearing, but not charge the $100 fee for that. So that's where that language comes from. You may still, the planning board may still say, hey, we don't think you should require a zoning permit for lot clearing activities. You may say, I think we should, and they should pay the $100 permit fee. Or you may say, I think we should, and we can still do no cost permit. So I mean, there's some flexibility there for you all. But initially, this started out with Julie working to clarify the town's ordinance requirements and simplify it. There's a lot of, I think, repetitive language in the UDO. And so started out as that. It then evolved into a discussion of whether or not we should require a zoning permit for lot clearing activities. And to be clear, there was, there is, there was, there is no intent to require that for any hand clearing activities or just simple vegetation removal. Whether it's an existing developed lot or an undeveloped lot, the intent behind the lot clearing provision was for someone who's bringing in bulldozers or heavy equipment and starting to clear the lot, maybe several months or years before they're planning to build a home on it. And it was really intended to be more of a kind of a situational awareness thing for the town, just to be knowledgeable about what's going on. The planning board had, I think, a healthy discussion about that, ultimately decided that they did not think it was necessary to require a permit for lot clearing activities that most of the time it would be dealt with when someone had plans for a new home, et cetera. In discussing that, reporting that back to the Board of Commissioners, they have some concerns about that. They specifically asked the planning board to reconsider your position on that. You all can take whatever position you'd like. You can say, yeah, we think we should require it. You can absolutely say, no, we don't recommend that. That's completely within your purview.
One of our former members, Ted Williams, who is a contractor, who has been very valuable to us in various aspects of zoning, said that he thought it was unnecessary and it was a constraint upon somebody who just wanted to clear the lot. I understood from this shambala that one of the reasons for this proposal was that people will call the town hall and say, what's going on, so and so and so? And wanted to be able to answer them, which is completely reasonable, you know, for the town to know what's going on. But there was a healthy discussion, and I just, I just don't know that it's necessary to have a zoning permit even without cost for lot clearing. But I'm, it's just my personal opinion, and the board outweighs me.
Well, I think it was to, with some of the commissioners, and my thinking behind this was to kind of, like, it's, my understanding, like you said, the knowledge of basically what's going on in the town and stop people from coming in and just clear cutings, cutting something, and then leaving it for the next 10 years to start growing back up again and looking badly rough again, whether or not we need it.
Well, there's nothing to stop them from doing that.
I agree.
Even if they get a zoning permit.
That was my, that was my point to originally not saying we didn't need it anyway.
Yeah, and one thing too, that's just important for everybody to remember, in the current UDO or in the proposed amendment here, we don't have any standards. Like, we don't require people to save certain trees or save certain areas in natural condition. So people can clear cut the lot if they would like to do so. The other thing that might be helpful for you to know is that for those properties that fall within KAMA jurisdiction, they're going to need a KAMA permit for clearing activities. Overall, that's probably 10% of the properties in Cape Codarette. So there's obviously all the properties in Star Hill and Old Cape Codarette, the interior parts that this would apply to.
My only questions would be, do we, does bush hogging fall under lot clearing? Or it does? And then do we have a definition of what the size of equipment, then it all of a sudden falls under? Like, if I hop on a tractor, my John Deere versus something larger, like, where is the cutoff?
Yeah, I think the, and we may need to clarify it better, but the intent is for large earth-moving equipment, things like bush hog, mechanical equipment. We're not going to get involved with chainsaws or anything like that. The tractor probably depends on how large of a tractor it is, but the intent is for significant earth-moving lot clearing activities.
Would you say large mechanical equipment?
Yeah.
With that, with that definition, I am adamantly against this. I spend a lot of money bush hogging vacant property to keep it looking nice. I mean, all the property down manatee that's vacant. And, and, and the ordinance says I have to.
And I think we can clarify that, if that's a concern of the planning boards. I mean, I'm just telling you, the way that it's written right now, certainly you all should discuss it and recommend whatever changes you think are helpful. But that, the way it's written right now, that's how it would apply. We certainly can clarify that, if that's something you want to clear.
I apologize. I may have misspoken. It says large mechanical equipment for lot clearing. To me, that's for earth moving.
Right. Well, that's how I interpreted it, and thank you for the question. Because if it's bush hogging, we need to change the ordinance that says I have to bush hog vacant lots.
If you change it to bush hogging for maintenance, to be allowed for, for the maintenance of the property?
I'd save a lot of money if I didn't keep them nice.
Yeah, I think, just to be clear, I mean, the language may need to be improved, but certainly there's no intent to require people to get a permit for any maintenance activities or even to cut a tree down on your property. Like, if you have an existing home or even if it's a vacant lot, that's not the intent of this. The intent of this is for large, earth-moving, earth-disturbing activities.
But what's large?
Well, understood.
Well, I think if we substituted earth-moving for mechanical, perhaps.
We do say large mechanical equipment.
Right. But I say if we perhaps substituted earth-moving for mechanical.
Large earth-moving equipment?
Yeah.
Would we potentially be putting citizens maybe in a safety risk here that are saying, you know, I'm going to take my chainsaw out instead of getting equipment in and all of that, and I'm going to do it to avoid having to go through this process? And they're really not qualified for it. Do we see any issues with the safety factor?
Yeah, my personal thought is I don't think that's a big risk. You know, I don't think that the permit requirement, the permit's not going to be denied, first of all, right? It's really more of just a situational awareness thing, whether or not that $100 permit fee, or actually the way it's written right now, no cost permit fee. I don't, I wouldn't be overly concerned about that, but I understand the point you're making, so.
I think we're trying to focus on cut and fill, not the removal of a tree with a chainsaw.
The other, the other thing I would say too, just for everyone's benefit, so regardless of who you are, there's always some level of judgment involved for the staff, right? So ultimately, hopefully, we're using good judgment and making good judgments. You can't write an ordinance that addresses every possible scenario that comes up. Having said that, you should certainly try to get the language as clear as you possibly can, but there are always situations that come up where ultimately it depends on the judgment of the person involved, and hopefully we make good decisions. Occasionally, people don't, so. I'm sorry, Frank.
It's got a huge list of requirements for this no cost zoning permit. A survey, a survey stamped by licensed survey site plan drawn to scale. Well, that seems to be more in the home construction aspect. If you have a survey, that is a site plan, is it not?
Correct.
Yeah. And then.
So this is going to cover home building too as well?
Well, the home building is, is covered in section two of this ordinance on the next page. So for the lot clearing activities, it's a survey, it's a site plan, and it's a KAMA permit if applicable. And like I said, there are many locations that wouldn't have a KAMA permit. So, but for example, if you believe that a survey is not necessary, I think we certainly can remove that requirement for the lot clearing. Now, when you look at the other sections of this, number two is really kind of just simplifying previous, existing requirements, so.
But.
Yeah, like, for example, if someone comes in to get a shed, for example, we don't require a survey for that. We accept a hand-drawn site plan. You certainly could make that determination for the lot clearing activities.
Well, if, if, I think it would be wise to remove the site plan because you want it more for the new constructions and clearing of the land.
Are there any future plans to have a specific natural area that needs to be left on lots, or is that never going to be something that's considered?
Yeah, that probably depends on the feelings of the group here and then the elected officials. There's not been any effort since I've been affiliated with the town to require that.
I feel like that kind of plays into, I mean, like, it was said, it's already going to be clear cut, then that doesn't play into. But if there is going to be a natural area or a certain amount of trees that need to be kept, I feel like it's more applicable in that terms.
Yeah, definitely more value if you're requiring people to keep certain natural areas, for sure.
Frank, what do you think about us cutting out A and B on that application for zoning permit on the lot cleaning?
I think you certainly could do that. You probably want to replace it just with a clear indication of the lot involved. You know, something that someone might provide from the GIS system, for example. So yeah, I mean, certainly you could do that. And by all means, if you don't believe it's necessary, I think it's within your purview to say that and to report that to the Board of Commissioners. So that was the determination the planning board made the last time.
But of course, they'll do what they feel is right.
Ultimately, they can, yes.
And all we can do is make suggestions. But I help people as very much I can at Star Hill as a member of the Architectural Review Committee, and I will even print GIS plots for them so they can sketch what they can do with the photography, so they can show us exactly. And I'd say to them, I am asking for no more than the town will ask for when you apply for a zoning permit to add a shed. And, and that seems to calm them down a little bit. Not always. Sometimes they just rip and tear at me, and I go, the only thing between you and lost property values are your covenants and your zoning. That's the only thing keeping your property values up. If you want people to put in junky stuff and plant flowers and commodes outside, then that's, you know, that's up to you. But we're just trying to help keep property values up, so.
I would probably suggest, if you want to make this easy to attain, I would probably keep B and just eliminate A.
Okay.
Because it's pretty easy for someone to come up with a site plan. They can do that through GIS or graph paper. So that's pretty simple. It, the intent was really just to have the situational awareness of what the person's plans are, so.
Have you had, you've, you've had issues with drainage pipes, correct?
Occasionally, we do. I mean, we do go back and, if there's an existing ditch, we do go back and make people install the driveway culvert. We've got one of those going on right now, actually, so.
I'd like to propose a removing A from section 14.8.8, application for zoning permits.
May I ask a question about, are we going to specify the difference in a bush hogging and a heavy earth-moving equipment?
Well, bush hogging is not used, but I can see, I misspoke. We can take out mechanical, as was suggested, and say large earth-moving equipment. Thank you.
Or how about not for maintenance purposes?
What do you think?
Not for maintaining, you know, your annual, your semi-annual, bush hogging wouldn't fall under that part of it, I wouldn't think.
We're not talking about.
We got an ordinance, you shouldn't let it get that high. Shouldn't need a bush hog.
It's supposed to be focusing on cut and fill.
Right, earth-moving, yeah. So we're going to make corrections to the mechanical to earth-moving equipment in section 14.8.8, and remove A in section 14.8.8, application for zoning permits. Well, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of changes.
Second?
Are you, are you asking, are you making the motion, or are you asking for someone to provide a motion if so desired? Okay, all right.
Am I saying the wrong word?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for someone to make the motion.
I need a motion.
I guess the question would be.
To move and make the changes.
Is there a motion from the, from the group?
Is there a motion from the board to make the changes?
I'm lost.
Jeremy, I need a second. Oh, did you make a motion?
No, because I still don't think we need it.
Oh, we're making changes, Jeremy, in section 14.8.8, application for zoning permits. It says performed by large mechanical equipment, and we're going to put in earth-moving.
Yes.
Okay? Then we're going to remove the A on the survey stamped by North Carolina Losses Licensed Survey in this. I'd like to, someone to make a motion to approve the changes. So move? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Frank, can I go out of order and see if our guests would like to make a comment?
You certainly can. Did you want to take a vote, call for a vote on this issue first?
Since we have a guest, I didn't know.
Oh, you mean comments on this particular item? I'm sorry. I thought you meant in general.
Or even in general, I mean, you know.
I'd like to, we've had an opportunity for public comments, and since you got here late, would you like to make any public comment?
If you could, press the red button on there for me, please. Yeah, thank you.
A couple of thoughts that might be helpful for the board. So first, the technical nature of the county's ordinances, and then I'll get to the practical part of your question. So there's the Code of Orders, which is, basically represents the county's police power, our ability to regulate behavior and activities of individuals and groups in the county. Then there's the Unified Development Order. So the Unified Development Order governs new development, all of those kinds of activities. And the planning board is tasked with making recommendations on the Unified Development Order. They'll typically get involved in things that are in the regular Code of Orders, so our police power. And so in Cape Codarette, our ordinance regulating chickens is part of the regular Code of Orders, so our police power, because it's not so much a developmental issue as a good behavior in someone's property. So that's the technical nature of it. So the planning board wouldn't typically get involved in that. You certainly can talk about that and make whatever recommendation that you would like, but those decisions are typically reserved for the elected board commissioners. The practical answer to your question is, we do have ordinances that the Board of Commissioners has adopted in previous years. They're pretty simple and straightforward. They simply say that you need to have a permit to have chickens. And I think we're now having about six or seven properties in the county that have a permit for chickens. It says that you can have a maximum of six. It says that you can have, you're not allowed to have roosters. You're not allowed to engage in breeding activities. It essentially says you have to have a certain amount of area. I think it's square for chicken, if a bit more than a crack, then it's minimum required for the chickens. And then essentially, yeah. So we don't have any regulations that pretend to have the food stored or how it's dispensed and so forth. And there've been some conversations about, should we amend the ordinances in some way? I've yet to determine any kind of consensus from the board on that issue, but we're looking to. But we're looking to.
I've had rats, and I just had a company come in, and they put out some little boxes and killed them. Boy, it doesn't affect the dogs. It doesn't affect the dogs. It doesn't affect dogs. It's a, it's just a container, like an ant container. So, I mean, it wasn't very, I'm near the water, so I've seen them. They were near water. There is rat. Rat, rat feeders that chicken people can get. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. All right, our next. We had a first and a second. Oh, all in favor? I'm sorry. It's been too many months.
So the recommendation then is to move forward with that ordinance, with the changes being removing the survey requirement and then clarifying that it's large earth moving equipment.
Yes, sir. Now, that will have to go before the commissioners.
That will go to the Board of Commissioners and will likely include that on their February agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Next is the ordinance on the UDO to include the planning board alternate members.
So this was an item that was requested by the Board of Commissioners also for the Planning Board to review and consider this. Some of you may be aware that our Board of Adjustment has five members and also has two alternate members that participate when one of the regular members is absent. The Board Commissioner suggested that perhaps that model might work well for the Planning Board as well. We have the five of you, obviously. We do not currently have any alternate members. The ordinance that's presented for your consideration tonight would create two alternate members. The, the ordinance amendment essentially says that those two alternates can participate fully in your meeting. So they would be added to this table and participate in the discussions that you all have about various issues. However, they could not vote unless one of you was absent, then one of the alternates, or if two of you were absent, then both alternates could vote as well. So we, we have not specified any terms for the alternate Planning Board members. As you all know, you, yours are serving three-year terms. Some of you are serving the remainder of an existing term. We did not include specific terms, because I think the expectation is that the alternates would eventually be promoted into a regular role. That's something we can talk about if you all would like. Other than that, the language that you see in the packet is the same language that is currently in place and has been in place for the last few years. I know there's some concerns about term limits on the Planning Board. I know at least one of you believes we should not have term limits. That's language that's been in the UDO for the last few years. That's certainly something that the Planning Board could discuss and could recommend a change on if you would like to do that. One other thing that I'll mention that's really not applicable in our situation, there's also language that calls for someone to represent the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So as I've discussed, I think with all of you now, there are four parcels in the town that are not part of the town limits, but are part of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Two of those are owned by the government, and so there will never be any residents there. The other two are vacant parcels, and so there are no residents in the ETJ right now. So as a practical matter, no one is appointed to that, because no one lives there. If at some point in time their properties developed, then those residents would be eligible for appointment. That ETJ representative was appointed by the county commissioners.
Okay. Bring that asset. It says the planning board shall consist of six members, and that's not happening.
Well, again, it's because the one member is the ETJ member.
Yes, sir.
So as a matter of practice, there's no one to be appointed for that slot. I've had a conversation with one of the Planning Board members about should we just remove that language? And I think if you would like to do that, you can remove that language. It's just at such a time that the property is developed, we'd have to have some language added back to appoint someone to that, so.
If, if the ruling says shall, I mean, consists of six members, I mean, we're not binding by the rule. So it really needs to be changed in part A under 14.7.2. Beginning in February 21st, the Planning Board shall consist of six members.
Would it be warranted to say that the Planning Board shall consist of members who, in the areas where residents reside? Or in a way that it specifies that since the ETJ does not have anyone living there, that there does not need to be a member involved for that?
It's easier just to remove it.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that if you're concerned about the shall word, I would honestly just recommend that you change six to five, and that you delete the language about the ETJ. But just, it's going to be incumbent on whoever is in our roles when those properties are developed to make it a point to have someone appointed to represent those areas.
Unless at the time of development, the property is put up for voluntary annexing.
That's right.
You never know.
We would be happy to entertain that request.
Okay. Does anyone else feel the same way about the shall, members six, changing it to five?
Oh, I agree.
You agree? Y'all agree? So we're binding by the law of the Planning Board?
And you want to delete the statement that starts out with five members and ends up with Board of County Commissioners?
Five members. And then. Maybe the shall, and then shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners, one member from the county, upon request, maybe, Frank? Right in there, that one member?
What I would suggest is just, starting with the word one, one member, I would just delete the entirety of the rest of that sentence.
Okay. One member shall be citizen of the county residing outside the town.
So the sentence would simply read, five members shall be citizens and residents of the town and shall be appointed by the Board of Commissioners, period.
Right.
Would be my recommendation, if that's your goal.
I agree. And then we're not going to break a general statute there, are we?
No.
No, because we, we don't have anyone living in that area.
Okay. All right, we'll remove, starting after one. And shall consist of five, change of six to five. The five members.
And then just removing the last sentence, ETJ representative shall serve a term of three years.
Yeah, and then the last sentence in the paragraph?
Okay. Really make those changes. Are you all comfortable with the idea of alternate members?
Let's get this paragraph done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, under, under B, I, I'd like to hear from the new members, but I think it's very hypocritical of the town board not to enact term limits on themselves and put term limits on planning board members. If a member is, is serving, is knowledgeable, attends the meetings, and contributes to the good of Cape Carteret, I just don't see the point in kicking them off for three years before they can serve another term. Just don't see the point. We don't have that for the commissioners. If they're willing, and we have no bar in power with them, but I just think it's very hypocritical to put term limits on the planning board.
But I think the difference is ones voted on by the people of the town, the others voted on.
Of course, that's the difference.
I mean, that's, that's the reason I don't see the, myself, I don't see their problem being a term limit personally, but that's just my personal preference.
The only thing about putting the term limit on it, when you have a new commissioning board, and you've restricted the planning board to three li, three years, then your knowledge is gone.
Your history is gone.
To help the commissioning board and the mayor. Do you understand what I'm saying, Frank?
Yeah, I, I understand. It really is the preference of the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. I've seen it both ways. It really depends on what your personal opinions are.
Well, I know in the past, we probably had members that stayed forever, and the turnover wasn't there. But a chair could request a member to step down, can't they?
Sure. Well, the, the Board of Commissioners can not reappoint if they feel somebody's not a good fit.
Yeah, because.
They, they just don't appoint them.
Right.
But this is, you're going to get kicked to the curb in three years. No matter how well you've served, no matter how hard you've tried, no matter what history or contribution you've made, you're out.
Well, what's the reasoning for that, to try to get new, to try to get a turnover? I mean, was that the reasoning for the language originally in there? I don't either.
I don't know, but I think it's bad reasoning. We can elect our commissioners. You know? The people have no input on who serves on the town.
That's correct.
And I think it should be up to the people. And this, this is not up to the people. It's up to five.
But the commissioning board, let's say, you know, they're not approving of what's occurring with an individual, they have the right to remove them. Is that correct?
The, the Board of Commissioners could certainly take action to remove the entire Planning Board or certain members if they would like.
If they like.
Which they have done in the past.
And so they wouldn't need to have this three-year in there, because they already had the power.
Yeah. I, I think, I think usually, it basically comes down to, on the one hand, you want people who have experience and who understand how the town's ordinances work, understand the town and so forth, and so, like in any role, you want someone with experience versus do you want folks with new blood, who have new ideas and different ways of approaching things? And I think in a perfect world, you want a little bit of both, right? And so that, I think that's really the, the question for you all, is which side of those goals or ideals do you lean more toward? Planning Board Member Holtz is absolutely correct that the Board of Commissioners can certainly just decide not to reappoint someone in the future. I mean, they, they have that authority. They certainly can remove people if they would like. Typically, typically, yeah. Typically, that's rare, right? But, so it really just comes down to what you value more. It, there's really no, there's no right or wrong answer. It really depends on what your.
Well, instead of saying appointed, you know, for three years, why don't we say, you know, when the commissioning board chooses not to renew?
Why not just remove me?
I definitely like your point about somebody that's in it, understands it. And if you're, you have that three-year lapse for whatever reason, and you have aspirations to get it back on, you're not engaged like you would be all the time with the commissioners' power to let, let us go almost at any time.
Right.
I think it's unnecessary. I think it was just an add-on, it seems like to me, that.
There had to have been a reason for the add-on, was my only question is, why was it added on? I don't know. I wasn't.
Yeah, what was the purpose?
Yeah.
Well, let's.
And I'm not saying it shouldn't be removed. I'm just saying there had to have been a reason why they went through the step of adding it on. I don't know.
I would like to make a recommendation, we remove it and then let it go before the commissioning board.
And if they want it back.
And they want it back in.
Make a decision back.
Then we can confront it again.
I agree.
Well, they've already had a public hearing on this, you know, without it coming before us.
Yeah, I don't know the history on when this was added, with the town. But, but any amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance has to be reviewed by this body first. So you're, I guess it'd be consensus to just remove letter B.
Yes, sir.
Letter B, okay.
We need to take a vote on that?
I think at, at whatever time you're ready to vote on the entire ordinance, we'll go through the changes that were suggested, make sure everybody's comfortable with them.
Okay.
To, having then to alternates as well.
Well, correct, but I mean.
No, it doesn't.
Instead of the word six.
Right.
In regards to the alternates, do we see a lot of absences on the planning board meetings where they would be of high value to have alternates?
We have, in the past, were a couple of times where we really needed an alternate.
And that's more so just me being new to the board and trying to have some insight to it.
Okay.
Yes, there was three there.
And we're gone, yeah?
Yeah. Be as big of a problem anymore. However, you know, from time to time, I think it would be nice to have, especially if they're going to, myself, if they're going to, you know, come each meeting, or at least most meetings as well, and, and have discussion with us as well. So it's just not somebody stepping in when somebody's absent. You know, because if they're not here each meeting, then what's, then there really isn't a purpose.
Right. I'm sort of neutral on this, but I would only be in favor of it if they were required to attend all planning.
Well, the, the ordinance is saying that they have to attend.
Yes, my understanding.
The way this is written, it says they're required to attend all. And they can participate in these kind of discussions, they just wouldn't be able to, which I think is probably a, a better approach if you're going to have alternates. I know sometimes I feel bad for the, just, the alternates on the Board of Adjustment, because they don't ever get to do anything, so.
And the alternates, if they are in the meeting, they can make suggestions, correct? If they attend all meetings?
The way this is written, yes.
Which I think is what you almost want.
I think, I think if we can find someone that would like to be alternate.
That was my next question. Do you think you would be able to find someone who's going to want to be?
Come to meetings.
Come to meetings, but not be able to.
Right.
That's gonna be the tricky part.
Well, and, and then I'd like to carry that a step further. If they don't come to all meetings.
What percentage of meetings would you?
I'd like to know. I think it's three for the commission, for the Board of Planning Board, isn't it? Three unexcused meetings, and you're gone?
I believe that's correct.
But we had.
Yes.
People that were excused.
Right, that's true. Well, that's true.
Right, if they're excused, it's, it's fine, but if it's unexcused, no.
Would we want to put that into the?
Well, they would abide by the same rules we would if they're alternates.
That's correct.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do have the two alternates, and hopefully we can find them, that would like to be involved. You know, because all of us makes, you never know what's going to happen.
Will the alternates be voted in by the Board of Commissioners as well? Yes, it says right here, yes.
They'll have to be appointed.
Appointed.
They'll have to be appointed, too.
Put in their application, then go for them. First would be finding them.
Will they be on the list to report to, to the Board at county meetings? You may have not been told about that little duty there.
We'll, we'll sign Mike the first one, okay?
It's this button that turns my microphone off?
I think it's snowing really hard out there.
So they, they would be on the list to report?
Yes, and they should abide by our rules, yeah. The same rules we have is all fine. I mean, they should have the active role as an alternate, as us. Because they would have to step in and, you know, if one of us have to step back. All right, so let's go back over all the. I'd like to go back over all the changes we've done.
Wait, wait, did we, did we ever finish with G?
Which one?
The alternates.
Change it to five? Yes. I haven't, we haven't voted on any of this yet.
Well, individually, we didn't do any of that, but, but in case, we want to go back to.
Well, the, this is what I heard the group say. So in 14. So, in 14.7, .2, .2, Paragraph A, we will change it to the planning board shall consist of five members.
Yes, sir.
We will delete the phrase in the second sentence, the phrase starting with "one member shall be a citizen of the county who resides outside the town," and ends with "appointed by the Board of Commissioners." That entire sentence would be removed of that paragraph. The E T J, the term of three years would be removed also.
Right, yes, sir.
Paragraph B would be removed altogether.
Yes.
And then in Paragraph D, simply the six would be changed to a five to be consistent.
Yes, sir. And then we're accepting the rules on alternates. And on D, we have changed that to five members.
Correct.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept the changes in...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you very much. And all in agreement? Ladies and gentlemen? Thank you, Frank. Okay, Frank, I'm gonna let you talk a little. This is the ordinance amendment, the U D O. Clarify.
Yeah, this is actually very simple and straightforward. The three holdover planning board members may recall, we talked about this probably five, six months ago. We amended our ordinance simply to clarify that impervious surfaces are the same definitions that the state of North Carolina uses. So, we clarified that all of those items, A through H, I get, actually, A through H, those are completely consistent with the state of North Carolina. We're simply adding artificial turf, letter I, only because the General Assembly just amended that statute a few months ago before they adjourned for the session. So, we basically say that if it's swimming pool water, slatted wood and decking, gravel or stone for landscaping, porous concrete, permeable interlocking concrete pavers, concrete grid pavers, porous asphalt, number 57 stone, those are all considered pervious surfaces. And for calculating any impacts and stormwater requirements, this simply adds artificial turfs. So that would not count as well. And it's completely consistent with the state statutes, which was the board's direction five or six months ago, so...
Now, we had to take a vote on this section to re-hon it?
If you're so inclined, yes. And you don't have to follow the same requirements as the state. It's just that was the previous policy direction, so...
It makes it easier, yeah.
Sure.
So, you can go to seven?
Yeah, if you're comfortable with this.
Make a motion to accept it. The ordinance of impervious surfaces.
Are you making it or asking for it?
I'm asking for a motion. Jeremy?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? I keep saying that word. So sorry. I'm glad you're alert.
Number seven is pretty straightforward also. It's really just clarifying. Earlier in 2024, the planning board, the Board of Commissioners, reviewed the requirements for the new Town Center zoning district. And those were approved. Obviously, the rezoning has occurred late last year. The intent in those regulations was that the signage regulations in the B-20 zoning district would also apply in the town center with one important caveat, and that is that if it's a freestanding sign in the B-20 zone, it has to be set back 20 feet from the front property line. We specifically, in the Town Center zoning district, want to have the buildings closer to the street. And so, therefore, the buildings can be up within five feet. So that the language was written in that Town Center ordinance to allow a freestanding sign to be located five foot from the front property line. Other than that, the intent was to apply the same standards from B-20 in the Town Center zoning district. And really, just an oversight on my part, to be honest with you. So I'm just trying to correct that.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Any second? Jeremy, second? I can't hear you, Jeremy.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I'll let Julie explain number eight to you.
Thank you, sir.
So this really goes at the special flood hazard areas. So, you have to elevate your house primarily. This might, this would apply to you. The community rating system helps us to lower our insurance rates in these areas. And right now, I think the town of Cape Carteret is at a Class Eight, and that produces a 5% discount on flood insurance premiums. And if the town does additional things to make people aware of flood hazards, we can continue to work at reducing our flood insurance rates. Also, sometimes the community rating system eliminates something that might have previously given us a discount. So we have to keep vigilant and keep up with what they're looking at as finding to be important to help us keep our rates where they are and potentially lower them. So, one thing that has been recommended is a non-conversion agreement. And that's what this agenda item is about. A non-conversion agreement is put into place for a structure in the special flood hazard area, typically when that understory is not developed, and to keep it undeveloped. And that reduces the risk of something flooding and reduces the cost of having to be replaced. And so, this is called a non-conversion agreement. I want to emphasize that we wouldn't be the first town to do this in the county or in eastern North Carolina. And Cedar Point and Pine Knoll Shores already have it. The city of New Bern, the whole of Onslow County, the town of Holly Ridge. And there are, I think, 16 other places, a total of 16 in eastern North Carolina that already do this. So, Lawton Derrick County, Washington County, Brunswick County. So inland and coastal communities are doing this. Bottom line, this would require a change to the zoning or to the U D O, Section 14.17 definition, to describe what the non-conversion agreement is. And then, in the floodplain development part of the ordinance, talks about the certification requirements. And bottom line, this would require that four structures in the floodplain, they would be required to have an agreement attached, recorded in the courthouse. And that's also provided, a copy is also provided in this. The last page here.
Existing or new?
New. New. Yes. Yes.
One very minor correction to Julie's comment. So currently, we're a Class Eight, and that gives everybody a 10% discount on their flood insurance. She said 5%. It's 5% additional discount for every class lower we go. So when we went from 10 to nine, we got 5%. We went from nine to eight, we got 10%. If we go from eight to seven, we'll eventually get to 15%. And this is just one of the items that might. Doesn't guarantee we'll make it to a seven and a bigger discount, but every little bit helps and could be helpful. In addition to the fact that it's already, you're not allowed to construct livable space anyway in the flood zone, this is just one other additional tool that gets recorded with the deed for the property that says you're not going to come back later and improve it, which many people do, as insurance you all know.
And in a way, it kind of protects the homeowner in the sense that, you know, if they shouldn't have built there to begin with, and the property sold and changed hands, here it is as a part of the deed. It's recorded that...
The title search will review.
Yes.
Which sometimes you wish...
So you're saying this is on new construction?
Correct. When they come in for their permit, you know, this would be a part of it. Because it would be in our ordinance.
Okay. And you attend the National Flood Insurance Program?
I'm participating. We participate in that, and I attend training and things of that sort.
And that's why we're gonna help them get the discounts, is that correct?
The discount would be to the insured property owner.
But all of Julie's activities qualify us, qualify our property owners for those discounts.
Discounts. Yes, okay.
And this would just be an agreement that would be signed? There's no cost associated with it or anything like that?
No, there's no cost. They would have to record it. There's a recording fee.
Who draws the agreement?
We have the sample agreement in...
It's already prepared.
So whether to require an attorney?
Yeah.
I do have one question.
Okay.
In the certification requirements, maybe I'm just picky, but the last sentence on the first page says, "The town of Cape Carteret will have the right to inspect the enclosed area at any time." I would like to ask if it would be agreeable to substitute the word reasonable for "at any time." Perhaps during business hours or in the presence of the property owner or representative, those things are important to me. Not, because we just had an issue with folks complaining about town staff entering property without, you know... This is protection for the town, I would think.
Uncle Allen, you can motion for that?
At a reasonable time or at a...
Reasonable, instead of at any time. And I'm just asking if perhaps there should be guidelines or rules, maybe in this, for during business hours and in the presence of the property owner or representative? Just to protect the town?
Sure.
And the property owner.
Yeah, that's sort of wide open, anytime, you know?
Yeah.
Would it make sense to say at any mutually agreeable time?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, because it was reasonable.
Yeah. Mutually agreeable, that's fine.
Because the homeowner could change it before you get there.
And honestly, if they did, you know, that's really what the ultimate goal is anyway, right?
Right.
Oh, you mean, oh, you mean the interior. Well, it'd be hard to change something like that.
Permissible changes.
And all of Brunswick County requires this? Interesting.
Brunswick, we have the city of Southport and the town of Oak Island, but...
Southport?
Southport, yeah.
They're sitting right on the water.
Onslow County, Onslow County, the entire Onslow County.
And all of Brunswick County? That's so interesting.
I don't know about all of Brunswick County. I said city of Southport and town of Oak Island, which are in Brunswick County.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I just wrote down Brunswick County.
But all of Onslow County, definitely all of Onslow County. And all of Derrick County, all of Chawan County.
Wow.
It's amazing, you know? If you want this list, I'll be happy to make it available.
That's just interesting that you have...
And does this, it's, obviously, it has a timeline on it or does not? So the Cape Carteret town resident would have the right to inspect the enclosed area at any time in any years to come? Or is there a time limit proposed on it?
At any time. Because let's say, you know, the property sells and somebody else, you know, oh, I'm not going to pay attention to that agreement. And we see trucks going in, and we know that something's going on, and they didn't get a permit for some reason. Then we would need to go inspect it to see if it's in compliance with this floodplain ordinance.
I think as a matter of practice, we would only seek to inspect the property if we had a complaint or if we had suspicion that someone had modified the area.
I always got a notice from the inspector, my septic system, you know? They just didn't pop in.
Would this be on all, all future new constructions from this point forward? Or once upon, once it's actual passed by them?
Yeah, new construction only from whatever date that it's adopted by the boards.
Or new construction?
Yes.
Yeah, that are in the, yes.
Remodeling.
And how much will this increase the discount for flood insurance rates?
Well, it's just, it won't get us to that next level. I think it's, each activity gets points. I think this might be 30 points, and I think to get to the next level is 100 points. So we would need to continue our efforts to look at other things to help us to get to that next level.
But as of right now, it's 10%?
Correct. Yes.
Yes, I want to make it clear, this is not going to guarantee any reduction in flood insurance rates. It will help us if we do other things. And a lot of it is public education and awareness. Some of the regulatory things help with that, so... But I mean, it's really more of, in my view, it's an extra tool to make sure the person does what they said they were going to do, right? When they got the permit to begin with, they said they'd comply with the floodplain development regulations. And it's really just another tool to reinforce that, hey, you're not supposed to be building below the flood level, so...
Okay.
On the flip side, someone may say, well, you know, that's intrusive government. I don't think you all, the government, shouldn't worry about what I do on my property afterwards. So there's, I think both positions would be reasonable. But it's currently not allowed to improve those.
Wait till floodplains go there. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the changes?
I'd just like to point out one other thing. There is nothing in this sample non-conversion agreement that specifies the terms and conditions under which inspections will be made. So what's, what...
And if the homeowner will be notified prior to? I think like a mailed document would be necessary.
Right. What should we do if anything about that, or should we...
This is a standard document that's prepared for use by many communities.
I understand that.
So if I could, we can put a similar statement to what's in, that we were talking about. This agreement that I have, let's see. The owner and subsequent owners understand that the town of Raisel Beach has a right to inspect inside the premises at any time to verify compliance with this agreement. So we could change it to at a mutually agreeable time.
Right. And that's what I was getting at.
Maybe it's number seven.
The sample we were providing, let's put it in somewhere.
It goes in...
And that'll let the people who build the home, too, that it can be inspected whether it's being built.
So we would have seven items.
Correct. Yes.
Seven, okay, good. Make it a number seven?
It's going to be number five, and number five goes to six, and number six goes to seven.
You're gonna make it five?
It would be number five.
And we just move those down?
Okay.
I have a question regarding the non-conversion agreement. Whereas, should they choose to build, let's say, the example of an enclosed staircase? Say their ground level is not enclosed, obviously. Maybe the house has no pilings, the exterior staircase is there. Should they choose to do an enclosed staircase that would then fall under this non-conversion agreement that would not allow them to do that? Is that correct?
No, anything that's allowed under the floodplain development regulations, they can typically have an enclosed stairwell, for example. There are certain storage uses, garages, things like that. But, so that wouldn't prevent that person from enclosing the entryway, assuming it's consistent with the regulations.
Enclosing it for storage, right?
No, for protection, going up the stairs. Is that what...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
You can definitely have stairway storage.
Because it would be within that P F E?
Yeah. You just can't have a comfortable area.
If you look at number one in the non-conversion agreement, it says the enclosed area shall be used solely for parking of vehicles, limited storage, or access to the building. So I think that covers that.
Right, right. I couldn't remember where that was. I couldn't remember where that was.
Would that allow for an insulated storage room? Or would that have to be not insulated for that to be in compliance?
You have to use appropriate building materials. And if the building material is on the list approved by FEMA, you can use it. If it's not, you can't.
Yeah, I know there's... I'm not an expert on it. There are certain types of insulation that is considered floodproofing and you may know better than I do on that. So you have to just use the right material, so...
They have lots of volumes and specifications of what you can't use, so...
No styrofoam.
Probably not.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion to accept the changes? In the UDO agreement?
So the changes that I heard the group suggest, number one is in paragraph five of the ordinance under non-conversion agreement, town will have the right to inspect the enclosed area at any mutual agreeable, mutually agreeable time. And then we'll add a similar statement as number five on the conversion agreement and renumber five and six to six and seven.
Moving, yes, five and six now. That's what I heard too. Anybody like to make a motion to accept the changes for the new construction ordinance? I'll make a motion.
All right.
Anybody like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. And the ordinance passed.
Was it four to one or five to zero? You are affirmative, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was that vote?
Yes, I'm for it.
Five to zero?
Sorry.
Number nine. Member Holtz had requested a discussion at some point in the future by the planning board about the table of permitted land uses. And I left a copy of the current table of permitted and special uses at your places tonight. And I'll let you discuss.
Well, in looking through the list of permitted uses, I noticed that there were some that were included in most zones, but not in R10. And these, as it says, these included uses such as small cemeteries, libraries, marinas, and home child daycare. So is there any reason, or they just left out by accident? Is there any reason that the town doesn't want them in R10? Is there a reason that marinas are allowed in R10 and 20, but not in R30? Just a question.
So the truthful answer is, I do not know. And I suspect Julie does not know either. It's just the historical decisions made by the planning board and board of commissioners over time.
Or just left out.
You know, when the UDO was prepared a few years ago, there's a belief that there were some errors made during that process. That could be the case also. I just honestly don't know.
Well, is there any objection to small cemeteries, family cemeteries, that were not mentioned in the UDO being allowed? For example, in the new town center, where it was previously been plenty, there is a small piner family cemetery. And that was there when Bill and I purchased the property. And it was surrounded by the most hideous chicken wire fence. And it was piners in the 1800s. And eventually I put in a beautiful fake wrought iron fence. And when the Presbyterians discarded the fiberglass steeple my father built for the first sanctuary, when they built their new sanctuary, I saw it off in the woods and I said, if you're not going to use that steeple, may I have it? And so they gave it to me and I gave them $500. And Ed Holt took it out and put it on a little pump house next to the cemetery. And if you'll go to the driving range, it looks like a little white country church with a cemetery next to it. It's really charming. But as it is, it's a, I guess it's a non-conforming use. So... And there is another cemetery in R10, Bayshore Park.
Yes, there is.
In the center of the commercial lot, the first commercial lot you come through, two lots, one through eight, block A, Bayshore Park. If you ever noticed that. Now, I don't know about other cemeteries in town.
There's one out, Hunter Brown Lane.
Okay.
Yeah, that would make sense.
I think probably the way to think about it is, so certainly any existing cemeteries, they certainly can remain and I assume will remain in perpetuity.
Right.
Perhaps the best way to think about it is if someone proposed a new cemetery in any of these areas, do you want to allow that to happen in these areas?
I'm not necessarily proposing that.
Yeah.
I just want to allow the cemeteries that are there to be in use. I plan to go out to golf and dolphin myself.
And so certainly those existing cemeteries will continue, would be allowed to continue to be used going forward.
Well, is there anything in the ordinance that we can insert to guarantee that?
I think the language is already there to guarantee that. We could certainly look at something if you would like. But I think that concern's probably already addressed.
Okay.
Okay. I have seen where they've moved a whole cemetery in Raleigh.
Yeah, that occasionally happens, sure.
Yes, sir.
And then the question, I think, from a practical standpoint, let's just say that somebody wanted to start a new cemetery or they wanted to move a cemetery and put it on a lot in, say, Star Hill, right? I don't know, regardless of what the covenants may say. Is that something you'd want to allow to happen or not?
Not necessarily. I'm not proposing that. Just wanted to ask the question, that's all. Libraries are not allowed in R20. I wonder why or if that's something we want to perpetuate. Marinas are not allowed in R30. Just ask it, that's all.
Yeah.
We could even take it up at another time.
So first of all, we can change really anything in here you all would like to change or you could recommend that the board of commissioners change it. When it comes to libraries, I'm looking for the list. So local government uses is just a couple of lines down from libraries.
Yeah.
That's permitted in every zoning district. And most libraries are operated typically by a county government, sometimes a city government. So I think it would probably fit under that category. And there are some inconsistencies in our UDO and some things that probably need to be tightened up. And we've talked about that and still working on those things. But we certainly can add a P for all of the other zoning districts for libraries and museums if you all would like to make that recommendation.
I think we should allow it in all areas.
It's unlikely there would be another one, but I'm just bringing out...
Well, the new center may want to have a library in it.
Yeah.
Could be a private library.
The whole family library.
The whole family library.
Oh, boy. That's right there. I think it's interesting that we don't have any allowance for a gas station.
We don't need anymore.
No, but I just wanted to point out that previous administration must consider a little kiosk, a convenience store, where the Lowe's, Foods, gas station is. You consider that a convenience store? That little kiosk with food in it? That's the convenience store. That's the only way that...
They got that put in there?
Yeah.
So it's not considered a gas station?
Well, no, we don't allow gas stations. We allow convenience stores with gas sales. And that was just a travesty, in my opinion, to allow that to go in. It's dangerous. But that's, I'm just pointing out things that... Like that storage unit that was a non-conforming use and got torn down and then was allowed to not only be rebuilt, but expanded. I'm sorry, that's all. I'm not going to say anymore.
But really, these kinds of questions, I mean, that's your job, right? You all are representing the people of Cape Carteret and making recommendations to the board of commissioners. If there are certain things that you think should be allowed or should not be allowed, you should absolutely convey that.
Well, you know, with the gas stations up here and if we had traveled like down, you know... I know we own a little bit of commercial land there on the right, near Bayshore, that they could put another gas station in there, a convenience store.
Well, I hope it would have to be a convenience store as long as...
But it could be a gas station convenience store.
If they use the same criteria they did for the Lowe's Foods, yes, which I think is terribly illegal, but...
That's how Walmart did it too, in Swansboro.
We can talk about this another time.
Yeah. Can we put this on the agenda for discussion for like...
Absolutely, yes.
The next meeting and all of us can think about things that we may not want it to happen? Or good things that could be done?
We will include it on the February, I think it's the 18th meeting.
Who are you going to sign?
Yeah, the next commissioners' meeting is on Monday, February 10.
Yes, and I would like to bring up an issue. I know the planning board, we planned it at 5:30 because our class members were having issues and we were meeting at 6:00. So my question is, I'd like to know if y'all like to go to 6 o'clock or keep it at 5:30 since you're all new members? Would it be easier for you to be here at 6:00?
Ask me more on Mike and his travel time.
Sure, I mean, I would... What you think is best? I can do 5:30, I can do 6:00. Would it be easier for me to show up at 6 o'clock?
If you're on the road all the time, we don't want you pushing.
Yes, ma'am. Means I don't have to leave Kinston as early. I don't have to leave work.
Right.
You know, so, yes. 6 o'clock would be wonderful for me. But as tonight, I could also make 5:30.
Well, it was always 6:00. We accommodated another member who's now no longer with us.
Then I don't see why we wouldn't go back to 6:00.
Six, be all right? Six? Six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're making a motion. I'll make a motion to move the meeting to 6 o'clock instead of 5:30.
Second.
Second, all in agreement? I didn't ask you, Frank.
No, I'm just counting the votes.
Julie, is it okay with you six? Might give you some time to settle down after 5 o'clock.
Or get home and get something to eat? No?
6 o'clock is fine with us. Whatever time you all think is best. No worries.
We get off at 5, right?
Sort of.
I remember the days, okay. Understand. All right, so the next planning board meeting will be Tuesday, the 18th, at 6 o'clock.
One thing I wanted to just give you a heads up on, we expect that we'll have the final plat for the first phase of the townhomes under construction on Taylor and Ocean Road. It's a 12-unit complex and they're nearing completion of the first four. So they'll be seeking final plat approval for the first four. That essentially allows them to be recorded and then conveyed going forward. That would come through the planning board first and then directly to the board of commissioners at their March meeting. So I expect that'll be ready for you. I guess if something gets delayed, it won't be until your March meeting. But they're shooting for your next meeting, so...
Okay. We don't want to delay their progress on that.
Are you going to assign somebody to report to the board?
Well, we'll discuss that in a minute. Okay, new members, we always have someone go before the town commissioners and discuss what we have discussed and what we're presenting to them. And Frank's very good about helping out on that. But anybody like to volunteer to lead the next commissioning board on February 10th to speak about what we spoke of here tonight?
Julie's very good about drafting the minutes for us.
Certainly.
I'm working. It's very helpful to have the draft of minutes. And I usually prepare a tight copy of my comments and hand it to the secretary of the planning...
The town clerk.
The town clerk. Thank you, ma'am.
Would y'all like to do it?
Tell me more. Tell me what, tell me what is involved?
It would be, the commissioning board meet will meet on Monday night. And what you'll do is just explain what we've approved here and what's going to be coming before them. And Frank is very gracious and he'll lead you through the process. And you would just say you're representing the planning board. If you'd like to do it and introduce yourself and...
That was the reason that they wanted us to do it, so that they could meet each planning board member.
Jeremy, you haven't had the opportunity to do it, have you?
Unfortunately, Monday, so is my meeting.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
With the lock, and I kind of...
You want to tackle first or you want me to?
Your call.
My call. This would be February 10.
Yes, sir.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, and the meeting starts at what time, Frank?
About 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. So February 10, 6 o'clock.
Is this more of a discussion with the commissioning board or reporting?
Report.
It's just reporting on what we... You can go back through the book and you can talk to Frank and ask him what you'd like to do.
It's typically just a couple of minutes of just a brief summary of what the planning board discussed at its previous meeting. So you'd be good.
That's all, that's mild.
So if you two want to come to the meeting, the first commissioners' meeting, and listen, I'll do the report. Would that make you feel more comfortable?
Oh, either way. Honestly, either way.
Well, jump in.
Sure.
Thank you. But I'll take my turn when it comes around. I've done it several times.
You've done it a lot, as a matter of fact.
But, and if somebody's not there, then Frank does a good job.
It's not mandated for us to do that, right?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, so...
It's just a voluntary thing. And that way they get to know the planning board and what we're working on. Okay. It is, okay, Frank and Julie, what would y'all, any comment?
No more comments. I just wanted to share with you about the townhome project, so...
Just two comments. I've started the KMA local permit officer duties. That started on January 6. And you now have binders with all of your materials in them. So please leave them at the end of the meeting so I can put new materials in for next week. This is new. We didn't have them before. You had to figure out how to read the items on your phone or flip the pages back and forth.
That's great, I appreciate that.
Now, may I leave my materials in and you just add to it?
I'll just put them at the back.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yep, yep. That's all I've got.
Make a motion, we adjourned.
Anybody like the second motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.